And we're about to start the school board debate. And before we do, we're going to go to our diversity and inclusion VP Raina Kirkland for one additional question for all the candidates this evening.
Great. Thank you so much, John. And it's so great to see such a wonderful turnout. So many people are excited about these elections, and that is a big positive for the Democratic Party. So, I'm just going to ask that all candidates, so for all of the candidates here today, I'm going to ask a question where I'll ask you to raise your hand for yes, and then I'll ask you to raise your hand for no. We understand that not all of the candidates will be on the call during this question. So whoever isn't, we will follow up with you via email. And we'll share that information with the membership after the fact. So as John mentioned, I am the VP Chair of the Diversity and Inclusion Committee of the Santa Monica Democratic Club. And last year, we worked together and collaborated a civility pledge. And so that's what this question is around. Across the country, there have been threats and hate crimes against both individuals and community leaders who are from diverse communities, and Santa Monica is no exception. Recent events have inspired us as a board to acknowledge and engage our local civic leaders in this mission of social justice. Ensuring that people show amicable behavior is critical. Therefore, we would like to ask all candidates to raise your hand if you agree to the Santa Monica Democratic Club's Diversity and Inclusion Civility Pledge. So probably easiest, if you can, to do electronic hand raises that will make it easier for Peter and I and whoever's going to be calculating these to get to see all of your hands raised. And then in a moment, we will ask the same.
I can't find mine. Oh, you're just got it.
Great. Okay, I think I got everyone. Okay, and so now if everyone could please lower your hands. Great. And even though this question is just for the candidates, I think a few other people chimed in with a yes. And so, you know, got to give an amen to that. Thank you. The more love, the better. So please raise your hand now if the answer to that question is no. I don't think I see any no's. Okay. All righty, thank you very much, and thank you, John, for that opportunity. And let's just continue with this amazing night of information from our candidates.
Thanks so much, Rain. I appreciate you lifting up that important issue. So now we're going to go right into our school board debate. And joining us as the moderator again this evening will be our programs VP Melissa Goodman.
All right. Hi, everybody. You're going to be so sick of me by the end of the night, but hello again. Um, I'm particularly excited about this debate. I should have said this at the right. I'm a renter, and I didn't say that at the start of the rent control debate. But I am a parent in the district. I have a third grader at McKinley. So this topic is near and dear to my heart. So I'm excited to dive in. We're going to have the same set of parameters as all the other debates, but I'll say them again, just in case anyone missed them in the other ones. Everybody will do a two-minute opening statement. You'll get one minute in response to questions. I will call on candidates in different randomized order for each question. It's a bot, so don't blame me if it doesn't seem to be that great. And importantly, if a candidate in your response, if a candidate invokes another candidate by name in some specific way that would warrant some kind of rebuttal time, I will give the candidate 30 seconds to respond if they want it, or, you know, if your name checked in some way, you know. And I don't do that. You can flag it. But those are the rules of the game here. And then everyone will get a one-minute close. So I'm going to dive right in because we have been doing this for a little while already, and I'll try to keep the energy up. But diving in, oh, well, first, I'm not diving into quite. I was so excited to do questions. I forgot you all get opening statements. So let's do that. And I'm going to go in random order, and I'm going to start with Miles.
Hi, thank you so much. I'm really, really honored to be here. I think I said in the interview, I'm a lifelong Democrat, so it's really important to me to engage you guys earnestly. I grew up in Santa Monica. I went to Samo High. I went to John Adams. And now I'm lucky enough to have two kids in the schools, a kindergartner and a third grader with special needs. I'm on this path because I got on the site council at my son's school, and that sort of started me on a path of understanding deeper what's going on in the schools. And obviously advocating for my son and my daughter. And in the process, I felt like there's a, there's a lot of space and a lot of areas that need attention. And there's a lot of things that I feel like I can bring to this. I think we have amazing teachers, amazing teachers, wonderful facilities. And I think that there's a lot, a lot to be proud of, but I also think there's a lot of improvement that needs to happen for my kids' sake and for every kid in Malibu and in Santa Monica.
Here, Miles. I'm going to go Lori next. Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry, I didn't see the timer.
I'm sorry. I just, I got excited and I thought you were done, and I didn't mean to take away your time. Please continue.
No, no, it's.
I read your pause wrong.
Yeah, it's fine. I, you know, I guess I'll just say this. This is really, it's a really important time for all of us, you know. Every parent in the district knows that and is living that, you know, we just went through COVID. And we're, we're trying to get our feet and back, and we're trying to help our kids, you know. So the stakes are really high for us as parents. And I think that's a big reason why I'm running as a parent, and I think it's a big reason why other parents are running, because we see that that's that connection to the schools feels like it's missing. And so that's a big reason why showing up. And even though this is a lot, it's a lot, especially with two kids. It's really, really important. And so that's why. And, you know, thank you. Now, thanks.
Thanks, Miles. Apologies again for stepping on you. I won't do that to anyone else again. All right, I'm going to go Lori next.
Thank you. I because I believe that great public schools are fundamental to addressing the deep economic and social injustices and inequalities that exist today. I never aspired to run for public office, but in 2010, friends convinced me that my skill set and my experience in the district and in our community would be of great value. So I reluctantly did it, and here I am still. Since I was first elected, I've helped lead our district toward greater equity and excellence for all students. I'm proud to have led efforts to help close the opportunity gap, to implement social justice standards, to implement an American cultures and ethnic studies requirement well ahead of the state's requirement, and to spread project-based and student-centered learning throughout our district. I'm proud that the decisions that kept me up at night during COVID kept our children safe, health, and engaged in learning despite the obstacles. I'm proud to have helped our district be fiscally responsible, saving taxpayers millions of dollars while also using bond money the way voters wanted it to be used to modernize our schools, to accommodate 21st century learning, and to ensure the health and safety of our students and staff. I want you all to know that my term, if I am elected, reelected, will be to continue to play a collaborative leadership role in moving our district forward to even greater equity, excellence, and engagement. And challenges, so social and emotional challenges from COVID, and ensure that there's a laser focus on addressing the mental health of our students and the special learning needs of those who have been marginalized in the past and those who need extra help in order to succeed. See, I'm going to end, so I'm going to just stop there. Thank you for having me.
Thanks, Lori. I'm going to go to Richard next.
Hello there. Hello, Democrats. My name is Richard Tavildorin Jeswin. Just a few quick things about me. I am a parent of two children in the Santa Monica, Malibu Unified School District pathways. Recent graduate, most recent was in 2021, from Roosevelt to Lincoln to Santa Monica High School. I'm a lifelong educator, first generation Iranian American here, and I work at Santa Monica College where it's never been a day of work. I am a renter here in Santa Monica, and I am the former co-chair of Santa Monica for renters' rights. And I am a union man cut from union cloth, having been a member of UFCW Local 270 and working my way through school. And so so much of my political sensibilities are surrounding workers' rights and housing and education. Why I'm running, I was first elected in 2014 and grateful to have been reelected in 2018. And one thing drives me, and that's the joy of education and the work that we do for social justice to ensure that all children have the best opportunities to be successful, that he, she, or they are able to meet their dreams. The work we've done together with Social Justice Learning Standards, our American cultures and graduation, American cultures and ethnic studies, graduation requirement, our work that we do with the joy of learning and the project-based learning programs, the things that we have been committed to, to focus on the well-being of children as we come out of this pandemic and the addressing of learning loss is key for all of us on this board. This board that I have had the pleasure of serving on has been attentive, has been responsive, and we look forward to continuing the good works of social justice. I'm so proud to be endorsed by Democrats Ted Lieu, Ben Allen, Sheila Kuehl, Richard Bloom, Julia Brownlee, SEIU just tonight. Very happy to have won that endorsement. I look forward to being a representative of the people, and I thank you, Democrats, tonight for the time.
Thank you, Richard. I'm going to go to Alicia next.
Hi, good evening, Democrats. I too just got my SEIU endorsement, so I'm very excited about that. My name is Alicia Minano, and I'm a parent of an Edison student, resident of the Pico neighborhood, and I help run my family's restaurant business. My husband and I moved to Santa Monica so that our son could attend excellent public schools with lots of enrichment opportunities. I was honored to be elected to the District English Learner's Advisory Committee, DLEC, to the English Learner Advisory Committee, ELAC, and to various positions in PTA, both at the school and council levels, including the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee of PTA Council. I was also appointed to the LCAP PAC. In my free time, you may find me volunteering at Edison or with my son at the playgrounds at Virginia Avenue Park or Clover Park. Public schools and believe that all children should receive an excellent public education. I am running for school board to offer a fresh perspective, both as a parent of an SMMUSD student and as a former at-risk and English learner student who started my education in public schools in South Central LA. I am a strong advocate for our students and a volunteer. I decided to run for school board to continue my efforts to support all students at the district level and to help facilitate constructive change. If elected to the SMMUSD Board, I will continue to advocate for, one, more resources devoted to addressing learning loss, mental health, and the achievement gap. Number two, diversity, equity, and inclusion in our schools. Number three, increased parent engagement and communication. Four, smaller class sizes and teacher and staff retention. And five, safe, secure, and sustainable schools. I would love to have your support in my journey to become elected to the school board so that I can continue my efforts in supporting all students, especially our at-risk and vulnerable students. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Alicia. I'm going to go to Stacy next.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. My name is Stacy Rouse, and I am a newcomer to political office, running for the first time for school board. I'm a 20-year Malibu resident. I have two children who came through our Malibu SMMUSD schools from kindergarten to 12th grade. One of them graduated 2017, and one of them graduated 2021. Even though they are alum and I am an alumni parent, I'm still involved with the school district, especially in Malibu, but also crossing over into district levels and and other Santa Monica schools. I'm currently president of a group called Malibu Schools Leadership Council that a couple of you may have heard of, but not everyone. It was developed about 10 to 12 years ago because there was a lot of competition in Malibu schools, even though we're neighborhood schools. And it was an effort to bring people together to collaborate. And then I joined that as part of the PTA later and in 2016 was asked to lead that. So the past six years I've done that brings together our principals, our Malibu Pathway Director, our Malibu Board Member, all of our PTAs, Boys and Girls Club, and others. We really try to have representation there for our ELL group and special ed parents, where we have a place to collaborate together so that we share ideas and don't work at cross purposes. And it's been my honor to lead that way. And the service that I've done there, I would really like to bring to the board. I'm there to represent Malibu. I think it's crucial for Malibu to have representation. I also think it's important for Santa Monica to have somebody representing Malibu on the board. And while I will represent Malibu, I'll be there for everyone. We're public servants as elected leaders, and we serve our whole communities and our whole kids, and I promise to do that.
Thank you, Stacy. And next is Esther.
Hi, good evening. Thank you so much for hosting the event, and it's so nice to see everyone. My name is Esther Hickman, and I am a parent of a kindergartner at Edison, an alumni, and I am also Pico neighborhood resident. I grew up in Malibu, went to Juan Cabrillo K through five, Malibu Park, and Santa Monica High School. I graduated in 1991 and have a bachelor's in voice performance from UCLA. I am running because I believe in the promise of our public schools. I'm first-generation American. My father is a bricklayer, and my mother came to this country from Ecuador as a housekeeper. And so for me, education through our public schools has been a path to breaking social and economic barriers. I do not have academic credentials, but I have practical and useful work experience. As a Realtor, it's my job to listen, support, and help others succeed. Prior to being a Realtor, I was operations manager in facilities and procurement. I've served as a classroom parent at St. Sebastian's, St. Monica's, and now at Edison. And the most important thing is that if elected, I would lead with humility, collaboration, kindness, and an open mind. I believe that we can reimagine budgets, prioritize our kids, and have small class sizes. And I believe that we can collaborate with all of our stakeholders so that we can fully realize the potential of our schools.
Thank you, Esther, and thank you, everyone, for those nice opening statements. I'm going to dive into questions now. And again, I'm going to keep randomizing who I go to first. So just going to dive in. One of the fundamental differences between the slates in this election is very foundational. So here it is in the form of a question. Is the district moving in the right direction or the wrong direction, and how? I'm going to first go to Alicia.
Hi, yes, I am. I think that our district is moving in the right direction. COVID, the last two and a half years, three years have been hard. And but our, our, our school, our school board has made, is heading in the right direction. They have created a plan, our Excellence Through Equity Plan. We have adopted social justice standards. We are heading in the right direction. Now we need the energy to focus on implementing all of our, all of those plans. I feel that our school board made really difficult decisions in, you know, during COVID, had to prioritize our students' health, our staff's health, and it was, it was a lot of, it was a lot of putting out fires. But now we get to do the exciting work of creating change, implementing those plans. And I believe that I have the energy to support our current school board members. And so I am excited about the possibilities that could happen here in SMMUSD. And I would be honored to work with people that have committed themselves in service to our students in our community. So, so yes, I believe that we, we are, we have the plans. Let's, let's get to work, roll up our sleeves. It'll take all of us working together to make change. And so I'm excited about that. Thank you.
Thank you, Alicia. Esther.
Thank you. So actually, I really do believe the schools are moving in the right direction. And I believe we have great schools. For me, there's just some adjustments that, that I feel could be improved upon. So I do think that we need to always prioritize our kids and their education and safety. And I think that we have to reimagine our budget so that we can start to prioritize small class sizes and focus on the teacher retention and staff. And I know it's a national crisis, but the declining enrollment from our engaged families here in Santa Monica and Malibu is very troubling. And I'd like to see exit interviews for families and want to know why our families are leaving because they wouldn't be leaving if they felt that we were doing things right. And so for me, that's a priority because we need our total absolute diversity to make things work. Small class sizes could absolutely address the marginalized, special needs, the most excelling, and everybody in between. I'm also concerned about the direction of facilities. I'm concerned that the, the method in that the facilities are being brought to, brought and getting modernized is not.
Sorry. Thank you, Esther. I wasn't paying attention to the clock either, but thank you. Okay, next, I'm going to Lori. Oh, I'm actually, no, I'm going to follow my randomizer. I apologize. Stacy is next.
Madam Chair, I just asked a clar- what is the time limit on this? Because some got two, some got a minute. What is the time limit on?
Oh, the time limit is supposed to be a minute.
Oh, yeah. Okay, I thought it was two because.
Two for the opening statements, one, one, and I apologize, I wasn't looking at John's timer for that one. But it's one minute for responses, one minute for everything going forward, and only 30 seconds for rebuttal if we get there. Got it. Thank you. All right, Stacy.
Before you start the timer, can you repeat the question for me? I understand it. I'd just like to hear it again.
No problem. Is the district moving in the right direction or the wrong direction, and how?
Thank you. I, I do believe we're moving in the right direction as a district. But I think all of us at any time always know that there's room for improvement. We want our children and our teachers and our staff to live in an environment of curiosity and learning and navigating through. It's not a right or wrong all the time. And I think we need to be the same as adults as we do the business of running the school board and, and governance and bringing in all perspectives. And so I think it takes all of us to do that. And in my foster was Malibu's representative for two terms, and he is ready to roll off. And he chose not to reelect. He was exhausted, and I'm ready to pick that up for Malibu and for the district.
Great. Thank you, Stacy. Next, I'm going to Lori.
Um, yes, I, I wouldn't be running for reelection if I didn't think we were headed in the right direction. But as other people have alluded to, of course, we have more work to do. I think we've done a lot in areas which I mentioned in my opening statement. We've improved our preschools, both in terms of quality and accessibility to residents who need them. We are in pursuit of a, an environment that promotes 21st century learning, learning in a way that will prepare students for the, the upcoming years that they are going to be adults and have to make decisions and take jobs that we don't even know what they will be yet. I, I believe that the modernization of our facilities is important, both for the health and safety of our students and staff, but also to accommodate the new kinds of learning that we are now putting into effect. We're no longer having students sit in rows of desks. Our, our student-centered learning and our approaches require spaces where students can work to. You know, I think my clock is over. I'd love to keep talking, but.
All right, I just had a technical issue and I mistakenly muted you. And I apologize. I'm going to start. Sorry, sometimes, John, your clock disappears on me, and then I don't know what's happening. So I'll time here, too. That's my fault. But thank you, Lori. Next, I'm going to go to Miles.
I don't think we're in the right direction. I don't. You know, there, there was a stabbing the first day of Samo High. I mean, maybe that's an outside, side moment, but like, no, I'm sorry. Like, there's temporary classrooms at my kid's school. John Mears shut down due to mold. We're building all, we're putting all our eggs in Samo High. I went to Samo High. I love Samo High. I love it. I owe so much to Samo High, but what about the rest of the schools? What about, what about the, the? I mean, look, the $200 million building they just built, the AC went out today. You know, like, it's, it's not, the kids are working so hard, and they deserve better than this. We, we're, people are leaving the district in droves. We need, we need to make change here. It's not working.
Thank you, Miles. All right. And last but not least, Richard.
Thank you. We are headed in the right direction. We can always be better. We can always be better with the Dr. Nogira report, the Dr. Sylvia Russo Implementation Plan, our focus on social justice learning standards, the work that we have been doing coming out of COVID with the monies that we're using from COVID to address the learning loss with the kids who are at the greatest need. This is incredible. And I do want to say that the person you asked this question about the slate to point out the differences between the slates, we're moving in the right direction. Persons on those other slates are saying mistruths, not telling the truth about things in our community. Telling people in our community that our kindergarten classes are over 35 students, telling about ratios of teachers to administrators, that is not true. Telling mistruths about our building plans and what we are doing for 21st century education. As I sit here, I can't imagine that what's being said by other candidates about saying we're not going in the right direction, but then here saying we are going in the right direction.
That was very loud. I'm not going off. Thank you, Richard. All right, I'm moving in a different direction, but we'll cover many of the topics you all. So what specific actions will you take to enhance support for student mental health? And this time around, I'm going to go to Richard first.
Karen, would you repeat it for me, please? I heard.
Sure. What specific actions will you take to enhance support for student mental health?
We just had a meeting last counting of all of the measures that are in place and have been in place. And we're looking at what Laco was calling for, for an assessment as where our students are. And the governor's noticed that there's going to be these one-time monies to assist us and help us in meeting the most vulnerable as we come out of the pandemic. It is clear that we have issues with anxiety, depression, and suicidal ideations. And we need to be Johnny on the spot, excuse me, we have to be persons on the spot and make sure that we bring all of the resources to bear. As Alicia has said, and we are committed to parent engagement, parent engagement here and identifying where the needs are. We've got to do this. We're calling for more attention to this as we get back into the day-to-day operations of the school. And to learn about some of the things that we have, we are having 31 weeks of one-hour. And to learn about some of the things that we have, we are having thirty-one weeks of one-hour sessions for students who are the most vulnerable. With tutors and social services work, we're targeting students who are greatest need.
Yes, thank you. As Richard said, there was a school board meeting and we covered this topic. We had Julie Lotan give us an inventory of the services. So we have, our district has great partnerships with clinics and different service providers. But we could still do better. One of the recommendations that Julie Lotan. That I, that she mentioned that I support is like having a social worker at each of the pathways. If I was elected to the, the school board, I would work to, I would love to see that happen. And also, let's see, yes, we also have a community school, a Samohe is a community schools. And there's a lot of resources that come with the community schools. So yes, that, that's, but yeah, like Richard said, we have need, we have need, we have, our students have anxiety, depression. There's substance use. So we, I would prioritize social workers in each of the pathways. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to go to Miles next.
Yeah, I, I, I do feel like I should have been able to respond to that. I feel like that was directed at me clearly, but. It, it's easy to say we will do this, we will do that. If you're on the board, it's been a year and a half. Come on, these are people, these are children, they need support, they need mental health support. My cousin, she's graduated Samoah. She has talked to me many, many times about her anxiety. Particularly around safety, around COVID, it's been a lot. So saying that we're going to do something when you're on a board i- is a cop-out. It is. This is too important. So what would I do? Well, I, I would make sure that we prioritize getting COVID money from the state and the federal government. To try to bring in more counselors, trained counselors, so the kids have a space to be seen and heard. I don't have any more time, but there's more. I would, I, if, when there's chance, I'll say more.
Thank you. And I just want to reiterate, for fairness, the, the, the rule we've set up is if someone is sort of name-checked in a challenged way. I'll provide rebuttal time, but I think we'll get to all the topics that have been brought up. I am next going to go to Esther.
Hi, so the, yeah, we have a mental health crisis and learning loss. And I think that if we had smaller class sizes, that our kids would be noticed. And earlier interventions could occur. And it was very nice to hear about the incumbent Richard. Talking about engaging parents. Because parent involvement and bringing parents in the community along with this process is going to be essential. So that we can all move forward and heal and make up for all of the learning loss. And I, I, I do think of that parent engagement has to be sincere. Parents need to be able to access the board during board meetings and, and articulate what they're thinking. There can't be restrictions during board meetings. And it's also just bringing the greater community and more resources in to serve our kids and their needs.
Thank you, Esther. I'm going to go to Stacy next.
Thank you. I definitely think access to services is critical, whether that's social workers. Or officials. I, I know in Malibu, we have a partnership with the Malibu Boys and Girls Club and their wellness center. They provide a lot of access free to not only the kids at our schools, but also to families. And it's invaluable. I, I don't know what we would do without them. And I would love to see that happen, not only alongside outside partners, but also more from within our district itself. With our own budget. I think more professional development for our classified and certificated employees to help deal with this would really be helpful. Their frontlines every day, they are so good and they know, but we all benefit from extra support that way. And that support for them directly affects our kids and supports them as well. Our PTAs provide parent education and I think centering that on mental wellness.
Oh, thank you. I got going. I'm going to go to Lori next.
Thank you. First of all, I would echo what Richard and Alicia said, and I won't repeat those parts. We do need greater resources and hopefully we will be seeing some help soon. The governor has signed a bill, I believe just last week, that will provide a lot of money to districts. We don't yet know what our district will receive and we don't know what the restrictions or the requirements will be for spending that money. But I am very hopeful that we'll be able to enhance what we are already doing. And perhaps we will have the money to put social workers on every campus. I don't know how much the money will be. We also talked last week about reviving the partnership we've had with others in our city, much like what Stacy described in Malibu. But in Santa Monica, among nonprofits and city partners who have been working for years. In the area of mental health and basically ramping up that partnership again. And ramping up the public knowledge of what is going on. Social and emotional support is absolutely something we're aware of and is being addressed in classrooms and by counselors. And the learning loss issue, I think, is a somewhat separate issue and I hope we'll get a chance to address that in another question.
Great, thank you. Okay, my next one, I'm going to ask that you bear with me because it's, it's probably our longest one and it's a little bit of a two-parter. So I'm, I'm, I will repeat if I need to. So every election cycle for at least the last decade, possibly longer. School board candidates expressed desire to improve academic achievement gaps. For Black and Latinx students and students in lower socioeconomic brackets, but the gaps haven't yet been completely erased. So here's the umbrella question, and then I have a specific sub-question for some of you. What are the best ways to tackle the achievement gap? That's first. But within that question, a more specific question for some of you. Some candidates in, in your questionnaires and in your interviews with us have significantly emphasized reduction of class size. As a goal to further shrinking achievement gaps and, and fixing a number of other challenges in our schools. And the evidence is mixed about the success of this approach to specifically tackle racial achievement gaps, and it's also very expensive. So if you have been a proponent of reducing class sizes to reduce achievement gaps. Why do you believe it should be the top priority for closing those gaps and how would you pay for it? So I know that's kind of a two-parter based on different opinions expressed in our questionnaire, but I'm going to go first to Esther.
Thank you. My favorite topic. So I, I really, really believe that small class sizes, there are endless studies. About small class sizes and how they benefit all students, wherever they are. Because in smaller class sizes, kids get noticed and they have the opportunity to have teacher and student relationships. Special relationships. It's so sickening that we're still talking, we're still in a culture where we have to talk about. Separation and hate and, and, but it's real and it's here. And I think it goes from, it's one of the ways to get the achievement gap. To close is by reinstating a culture. And, and it really takes kindness and care and it needs to come all the way from the top. And it takes communities to collaborate and have compassion. Educate one another. Thanks.
That minute goes fast, I know. All right, I'm going to Stacy next.
All right, so I think some of the best ways to tackle the achievement gap. Include really heightening our inclusion and belonging in classrooms, but all the way through. And, and that's even how adults, the inclusion and belonging among adults too, including in staff. Being trained and practicing cultural relevancy and those important practices. Understanding that our students come into the door with their whole lives with them and they don't just leave it when they walk in. And teaching through that, it, it's really complicated. I can't do it in a minute, but I, I'm, I'm strong for this kind of practice. Not just having restorative justice practices, but an actual restorative justice culture, which is different than what we do now, good, but we can do better. And seeing teachers, staff and administrators that are more like you. We have good representation, but it, it could be better and we all know that and we all want to work toward that. And that's a big equity issue, not just for our kids, but for our employees. And that all contributes. Thank you.
All right, I'm going next to Alicia.
Hi, thank you. I, I disagree that small class sizes is, is going to close the achievement gap. I don't think that that is a silver bullet that will fix all of our. We know that our students start school TK kindergarten and there's already large gaps in their behavior, attention. In their literacy skills and their math skills. So I do, while I am a proponent and think that small classes are, are good. I don't think that this is a silver bullet to fix everything in our schools. I believe that we need to have, it takes all of our community. We need to have early childhood programs, we need to have, we need to meet where our students are at. And our students need different programs and supports, depending if they're in elementary school, if they're in middle school, if they're in high school. And so we need to meet our students where they are and give them the programs and supports that they need. And that is, it takes all of us working together to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Alicia. Next, I'm going to Lori.
Many things that have been said I agree with. I think that addressing the achievement gap begins with having high-quality preschools. And that's why that's something that I've put a lot of energy and focus and time into since I've been on the board. I think we've, we've really moved the dial a lot in that respect. And I, I too have read the various studies and the evidence is very mixed about class size. Our class sizes in the early grades are especially reasonable. And I think the, the issue with the class size studies is that in order to move the dial. They, you tend to have to reduce classes by seven to ten students per class. And to do that district-wide would cost, I don't know, twenty to thirty million dollars at least. And I don't think that, that that's a silver bullet necessarily. God, I don't like that term. I'm sorry to use one of those.
I'm going to go to Miles next.
This is a really, really complicated thing and a minute is absurdly short to try to answer this question. Small class sizes are definitely not a silver bullet. No, of course not. But we're trying to find things that we can actually do that will make a difference. And I disagree. I disagree. Small class sizes have been shown to make a difference, especially with high-risk kids, low-income kids and minorities. That's true. It's in the Nogera report. Additionally, the Nogera report talks about buy-in. And it talks about how the school board for many years has come up with wonderful ideas. But then the teachers don't buy in and they, and, and they drop it and they move on. So the school board has not shown that they are taking the very, very well. Seriously. And, and, and this is an issue we've been dealing with for years. And we have not seen any growth or change. And it's absurd for us to still.
Thank you, Miles. I'm going to go last to Richard for this question.
I, I would agree, I do agree with Alicia and with Lori and also with what Stacy said about having to see the kids. Be where the kids are, but I would respond again in this very short time, talking about equity and inclusion. And we have, as a school board in a school district, put in these processes with our social justice learning standards. With our Aces, with our early childhood education. We have hit a bump with COVID. Of course, we need to recognize that we, we need to be implementing. What I like to call the Russo operator. Drotti and his team leading us. We need to be looking at the ways in which we can also expand parent engagement. And address the larger societal questions that inform this opportunity and achievement gap. We're not going to be able to solve this overnight and we put processes into place so that we can address this by seeing. Me or she, they are at.
Thank you for that. I am going to move us on. I wish we had like five hours for this debate, but we do not. So I'm going to move us on. I can't have a debate without touching on Malibu and Santa Monica separation. So here's a question about that. Some of you have supported, you know, Malibu separation from the district. You know, and some of the proposals have been on terms that many Santa Monicans perceive as unfair and harmful to Santa Monica students. If elected to the board, would you support a solution where Santa Monica student per pupil spending. Is less than Malibu student per pupil spending? And in putting it another way, and where Santa Monica students who are more racially and socio-economically diverse than Malibu students. Are disadvantaged compared to Malibu students. So looking for your thoughts on that and equity in general. And I'm starting with Miles.
Lucky me. Again, really complicated question. A minute is really hard to make a really well-stated situation here. Malibu's going to leave. They're going to go. They just, they want out. They don't want to be part of the school. They don't want to be with Santa Monica anymore. So they have more money per pupil, they put in more money per pupil. When they leave, at some point in the future, Santa Monicans will have less money than they do now at some level. And it's unfortunate, but i- it's the truth. So what we can do is we can sit down with Malibu and Santa Monica and find an equitable solution. Instead of fighting them and suing them and spending millions of dollars on lawyers. And, and not respecting the fact that the Malibu population does not want to be in the SMMUSD anymore. And i- it's, it's unreasonable to try to hold somebody in a marriage that they don't want to be in, even if it disadvantages one of the parties. It's not fair and it's, it's not reasonable. So we have to be.
Thank you. Alicia, I'm going to go to you next.
Hi, I, I, I know that the Malibu unification has been an ongoing problem. There's been many attempts. I really am sad to see that we are here. It comes down to the finances. I believe that, that no, it's not acceptable. We, as Santa Monica, we have a higher demographic of students that are English language learners. That are Latinx, are Black, African-American students, are students with special education. I, I don't think it's acceptable. It, it has been explained many ways, but if this is a divorce, you don't get to keep the house. And no, we're not, you know, we're here. For, we want to make sure that our students are able to have the programs and the supports they need and I don't, I don't support that. I don't, I don't support an equitable. We, we need to make sure that our students, both in Santa Monica and in Malibu, that belong to those groups. Have the programs and supports that they need. That, for me personally, that is, that is my priority. Thank you.
Thank you, Alicia. I'm going to go next to Stacy. And Stacy, I did put the question in the chat in case you didn't see it.
I'm studying it feverishly. Thank you for doing that. I, I've studied it so closely, I'm a little confused and would like a clarification. Because it says where student per pupil spending is less. And do you mean where what's received is less or the cost is less? I'm sorry, that's a little confusing to me.
The cost.
Okay, thank you. So I fully support separation. We are the last discontiguous. Eighteen eighty and then allowed to dissipate. All the ones that there were are gone. They were stopped for a reason and they've all dropped off for a reason. I absolutely don't think it should be at the expense of any of our students. And that's why I think this agreement has taken so long to hammer out, to come to something that does not disadvantage any students. There is going to be a different amount of income because of the way Prop thirteen has it be from property taxes. There are more monies than that involved with like city taxes, measured prop, why, why, sorry. My brain's a little dead, if it's a proper measure, but both communities have ways to do that. And this agreement should make that tail out, so it doesn't just. make that tail out so it doesn't just drop. Thanks.
All right, I'm going to Esther next.
Hi. Um, so I believe first and foremost, right now, today, Malibu students need to be treated equitably and have the full support of this district. So Malibu's leaving and um, there will be a financial arrangement that will be fair at some point because it'll be agreed upon or arranged by a third party. And um, it looks like budgets are gonna have to be reimagined. And it doesn't have to hurt our Santa Monica kids. Um, and but we have to, again, this goes back to the culture of collaboration. Um, there just has to be a path for people to work together and um, and find a way to make it work.
Thank you, Esther. I'm gonna go Lori next.
I need to correct some of what's been said. First of all, the school district has been trying to come up with an equitable and fair solution for years with Malibu. And where we are procedurally is, there is no law who decided to file a petition seeking to separate because it got frustrated with the process. That's the best way I can put it um, glibly. Um, and that has led to then um, mediated negotiation, if you will. And we are trying very hard to come up with a a a solution and I'm really hopeful that we will. But what has to be understood is it's the school funding um, formulas over the last fifty years do not provide for what Malibu has been seeking or for what Miles was alluding to. There is no such thing as Malibu money is Malibu's money. Um, Prop thirteen is, it's a very complicated um, uh, formula. But we have been doing the best we can and we have a financial expert, as does Malibu, who are trying to come up with what is fair and will leave Santa Monica with no less than it would have had if we re- remain eh, and with enough um, room to grow in a reasonable way. No one is.
Sorry, when I saw John's timer wasn't set right, I did my own and then I did a weird thing with mute again. I apologize. Uh, thank you, Lori. Uh, last on this question is Richard.
Thank you. Um, I would like to say that everyone on our board, the school board at this moment has voted and is on record in support of unification. And we are in very serious, very thoughtful mediation with the city of Malibu. And we are making forward progress. It is the intention of all parties involved to make sure that the children are protected. And I would like to say, if I could just correct, that the Santa Monica Malibu Unified School District is not and has not sued the city of Malibu. That's just not a true statement. And what we're looking at here is what the expenses will be as well as what the state revenue will be per FTEs. And so we're wanting to make sure that the programming and the support that the children get today in Malibu and in Santa Monica is what they have when we come to an agreement. I am confident we'll come to an agreement. We've been very um, adult-like and civil in our mediations. And I do hope that there will be um, some notice soon to the public.
Thank you. I'm I I don't, I think this was a question where people were responding to each other on a policy issue. I don't think that.
My name was invoked. I will let it go.
I I don't believe, John, correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't believe it was. Um, I am gonna move on. I'm gonna try to squeeze in two more questions, even though I have four, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna move us along. Um, some uh candidates during this debate, some of the non-income candidates have questioned whether the current board is fiscally responsible and whether it's engaged in good governance. Uh, many people raised that um, in their opening statements or other questions. So the question is, do you think the board is making sound fiscal and management decisions? And very specifically, why or why not? And um, please make sure you cite an example that demonstrates your answer in your minute. And sorry, too many screens. I'm gonna go to Lori first.
Yes, I think we've made sound fiscal decisions. Um, some of the decisions we've had to make are extremely difficult. Um, and one of them is that in a, in a situation where you have declining enrollment, you have to somewhat right-size your budget. And we have tried to do that as slowly and as carefully and as thoughtfully as possible. During COVID, we did not want to lay off any teachers, so we did not. But um, and we have tried to reduce and right-size through attrition rather than through layoffs, which is a much more humane and appropriate um, approach, I think, to fiscal responsibility. Um, there have been so many decisions, it's hard to say. We're, our, our budget is really geared towards a pro- towards producing equity in all.
Oh, my God. Sorry, Lori. Time's up. Uh, I'm gonna go to Stacy next. My mute button is having problems.
Okay, um, so I, for me, um, I feel like it's an approach issue more than it's um, whether or not they haven't been sound. Um, I, I've, because of some of the work I've done, I've been closer in. I see the budgets. Um, to some level, I am definitely not a fiscal expert. Um, I, I don't feel like there's anything overt. Um, I do think we could choose things differently that would impact our budget differently. And a big one for me is how we deal with conflict. Um, I feel like we spend a lot of money um, for um, legal pursuits as opposed to other ways to resolve conflict and deal with things early and that directly impacts budget, which then ends up directly impacting staffing and kids. Um, and that as a, I have my math resolution, that really bothers me. And um, it's really hard to set a conflict systems in place, but it's possible and I think very worth it. Um, one example with the PCBs, when it was brought up, seven million was spent on legal fees and then it had to still be cleaned up. And if that um, complaint in the beginning was taken differently, it's possible it could have ended differently and the money could have been spent differently. Thank you.
Thank you. Going to Richard next.
Thank you so much. I I do believe that the sport has been fiscally responsible and there are many illustrations to point to that. Um, I would say that I would wanna focus on the equity lens and how our budgeting is focused on closing the achievement gap, the opportunity gap for children. We have clear and transparent processes where we have the stakeholders engaged when we're talking about the parent community, the, the teachers and the SEIU. Um, so we take this as a community and we are very fortunate here because we are a progressive community that is truly and deeply committed to social justice. And so our choices, right, a budget is reflective of our values. Our choices reflect our serious and deep commitment to equity and inclusion. I'm very proud of what this board has done and how we have led, not just in the county, but in the state.
Thank you, Richard. Going to Miles next.
Again, minute is very short. So, okay. For one thing, um, the real estate, the, the building of buildings and the, the line items are very vague. So eh, whether or not eh, there is financial uh, responsibility or not, we don't know be- because we, we don't know because there's, they're vague line items. Um, I have a history and a, a past in real estate management and I can tell you that like allowing a building to go uh, to, to be consumed by mold and then spending twenty million dollars um, to fix it is, is a waste of money. Um, you just, one of the other people, which I won't say their name, just said that twenty million dollars is probably what it would cost to make class sizes smaller. But we would have had that money if John Muir wasn't closed. Additionally, we're not spending money on the arts, as evidenced by the principal of Olympic, who just resigned in protest because he says we're not giving those kids what they deserve, which is more than just basic education. We have basic ed. If enrollment's dropping, we have more money per, per student, not less. We also have COVID funds and yet, and yet, I'm sorry, but my kid was in TK and he did.
Thank you, Miles. I'm going next to Esther.
Um, so we have one of the wealthiest school districts in the country. And um, I, I also agree, it's the financials aren't transparent, so we don't know whether it's being handled fiscally responsible or not. Um, and I think that our spending should reflect our community values and goals. And so um, so I do sometimes question whether um, the priorities of spending are truly reflective of what our families want because I don't think there would be so much declining enrollment in our local Santa Monica, Malibu community if um, families were um, happy with the way, the services that they're getting. Um, with the facilities, I um, you know, that's coming from a different pot of that's coming from the bond money. And um, I've just observed that, again, the priorities are might be working for the current board, but is it really working for the community? Like John Muir closing down, it could have been, there could have been an intervention earlier. There could be much more proactive.
Alright, thank you, Esther. Alright, uh, last on this question is Alicia.
Yes, I think that um, that are, I actually think that parents have a lot of say in the, in, in the budget. For example, I've, I've been a member of D-LAC. We get to look at the budget. And I am so surprised about how much of that, the, the money that we have is spent on paying our people. And I think it should be that way. We should pay our teachers. We should pay our, our staff and, and, and I think that's wonderful. Um, I, I wanna say that maybe a lot of the confusion comes with the fact that our district became a basic aid district. And um, there was that money that was taken back by Laco. Um, and, and, and that created, you know, we, we, that created some confusion in our community, but it was a change of status. We used to be funded diff- and now we are a basic aid district. Um, however, I believe that parents have a lot of say. We have different committees and our school board uh, pre- presents the budget in a very, we have, we have the presentations of the budget to the entire community. So, thank you.
Thank you. Alright, I'm doing one last full round question, one rapid fire question, and then we'll do a, a close. So what in your experience makes you a good voice and representative for our most vulnerable students? Whether those from marginalized racial groups, those who are impoverished or unhoused, or those who are English language learners? And I will start with Lori.
I'm sorry, Melissa, can you suppo- can you repeat that again? I'm sorry.
Sure. What in your experience makes you a good voice and representative for our most vulnerable students? Whether those from marginalized racial groups, uh, those who are impoverished or unhoused, or those who are English language learners?
Um, I, I think my um, my background, my values, my passion, my commitment make me a, a great advocate for those who are vulnerable. My children went to school, um, in elementary school, they went to Will Rogers on the south side and then they went to Lincoln on the north side and then they went to Sammo where everybody goes. And I think those experiences were truly valuable for me because they really enabled me to see the differences, to experience them firsthand with my, my kids' friends and the families we went to school with, to, to see the differences and the different challenges um, firsthand that some kids have and that other kids don't. It was a very different experience when my kids were at Lincoln than from when they were at Will Rogers. And I think that experience was invaluable. Um, I'm looking for your timer, so I don't.
You have nine seconds. I'm sorry, I was timing.
Um, I have spent my whole life caring about equality and equity and it's something I have been devoted to forever.
Thank you very much. Alright, I'm going to Miles.
So I was born um, in Santa Monica and my mom um, was a single mom. And uh, met my dad when I was seventeen and my mom was mentally ill. And I basically raised myself. Um, so I grew up with, with very little. And part of the reason I'm running is because Santa Monica High School and John Adams did a lot for me. They showed up for me. Um, the band director drove me to the SATs. Um, uh, I mean, I could just go on and on, but, but so many people were there for me and, and, and gave me a safe place. So I feel the shame of every unhoused kid in this city. I feel the shame of every low-income kid who doesn't have enough money to, to play sports. I mean, the, 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 the coach of the water polo team had to buy me um, swimsuits. So I have more empathy and sympathy than, than I can tell you and it means a lot to me to, to take care of those kids.
Thank you, Miles, for that. I'm gonna go to Richard next.
Thank you. Um, one of my um, favorite things to um, recite is from one of my teachers, uh, bell hooks. And that is that uh, our experiences are the raw materials of our identities. And so what I bring is a lived experience, an academic training that's based in social justice and a life that I've tried to lead as best I lead, as best I can as an anti-racist and an anti-heterosexist. The work that I've done while on the board, developing with my peers, the American cultures and ethnic studies graduation requirement are strong insistence in making sure that OBGQIAA voices are integrated at all levels of the curriculum as the state law requires. Looking to see the adoption of new um, written materials books for kids throughout that reflect our multitude of voices in the community and our country. Again, I say my lived experience and my collaboration, my willingness to work with people and to listen.
Thank you, Richard. I'm going to Stacy next.
Um, thank you. So I um, have been fortunate in my life to be exposed to a lot of different people in different places and it gives you so much empathy and insight. I've had many occasions where I've had to rely on the kindness of others and it makes me realize how much we do. Um, my conflict engagement background really helped me to have the discipline of hearing all voices and implementing that um, into solutions. I have a um, basic respect for everyone's contribution and um, ability to be in the space. We all belong there. Public schools are for everyone. Um, I'm very asset-based. Um, all of us have something to give. And um, I had five years in early childhood education. I just finished in May. It really taught me what Alicia was talking about with the gaps that start so young and how that's a good place to start. And uh, the socio-emotional learning that I did, um, uh, how education is a racial and social justice issue um, and a, and a made a level of playing field.
Very much for that. Uh, going to Alicia.
Yes, I think that um, in things like closing the achievement gap, we need to really understand the needs of the communities we are trying to help. And I come, I'm, I was an English language learner. I'm an immigrant. I was, you know, I was really poor growing up, so I have that lived experience. I have that perspective and I will speak up for our students and our family. I feel very strongly that education, eh, education, we should all have an excellent public education and I will do everything that I can to, to represent my, my community. Um, and like I said, it would be an honor for me to be on the school board and, and be able to represent to my um, the students that are, you know, in the families that I work with, I, on D-LAC and um, yes, thank you.
Thank you, Alicia. And last for this question, Esther.
Um, so I think coming from a lower socioeconomic uh, background does help um, with experience, but I think of that um, it goes back to one of the school, the school board president, Maria, once in two thousand eighteen, she had said, um, this is a matter of the heart. And I really think it goes, it comes down to that. And how are we going to prioritize um, making these changes? Cause we all know, I think we all want our kids to be happy and. Because we all know, I think we all want our kids to be happy and successful and healthy, and we want to close the achievement gap. We all want better for all of our kids, but what are we going to do about it? And we have to start prioritizing these changes, and we have to follow the Noguera report. And it's just going to be one step at a time. Nothing's going to be a silver bullet. It will all be a multi-pronged approach. But definitely shifting culture in our school district to one of inclusion and kindness and care to our fellow school board members, our parents, our community, our teachers, our classified staff.
You, Esther.
Need to come together.
Appreciate it. Okay, I'm gonna squeeze in one last one, and I'm gonna do a rapid-fire with a yes, no, and very briefly why with 30 seconds on the clock, and then we'll go to closing statements, because it was an issue where there was a lot of differences in the questionnaires and the interviews. So there's currently an effort to change our school board elections from at-large to districts through petition files with an LA County body. While doing so may have some benefits, it may also have the effect of decreasing rather than increasing the numbers of Black and Latinx people elected. The new law that allows such petitions is currently being challenged in court. Some of you stated in your questionnaires that you support the move to district elections and without voter approval through this process. Do you support moving the district from at-large to district elections? And very briefly, why or why not? And you'll have 30 seconds. And we will start with Lori.
You've made me start too many times.
I know, I use the randomizer. It's a bot.
I'd support the move to district elections. I believe that it would lead to, lead us away from equity to less coherence and less fairness and cohesion in our district. I feel like it would balkanize certain decisions, make people retreat to their own school sites, where we have done a lot to build a culture that makes everyone aware that everyone, regardless of what school they go to, they're all our.
Miles next.
I do agree with districting. I do think it's more democratic. I think until about a week ago, four of the seven members lived in the same neighborhood, so there is not equal representation. I think Craig Foster had to spend a ton of money to get elected from Malibu. I don't think that it does. I think you shouldn't have to raise $100,000 to win a school board election. I don't think that's right. So what I do think is that if Lori and I were racing against each other, I think that'd be fair. You know, I think that'd be a fair contest, and you know, if.
Going to Richard next.
Hi. In the general concept, I am not opposed to districting. What I'm opposed to is a lack of a public process in which we, the community, could talk about what is best for students and what would be best for pathways in our district. So I am opposed to the current petition. Of course, I'm stated as being in opposition, but I'm not opposed in general to speaking about districts. But I think it needs to be a community-wide, thorough, deliberative engagement.
Thank you, Richard. Going to Alicia next.
As a strong Democrat, I support the California Voting Rights Act. I think that every vote should count, and the suppression of minority votes needs to be addressed. In Santa Monica, we've had strong representation on city council, on college board, on our school board. And for that reason, I do not support district elections. I especially have concerns over the petition that was filed recently that would, that split Sunset Park and effectively was giving Malibu, an affluent, white city, two seats on the board, effectively unseating the only Latina. I do not believe that furthers the purposes of the law.
I'm gonna go to Stacy next.
Thanks. These are two separate things, supporting the one at-large and then just in general, the concept. So I definitely think it should be a voter-approved process and one done with great community input and with scientific methods of how to district, and that those things do exist. It should not be gerrymandered, and it should be in light of the communities and should have input over time to shift as demographics shifts. We do need to follow voting laws, and everyone needs a voice.
I'm going last to Esther.
Thank you. So I absolutely support district elections. It's coming down from the state, and California Democratic Association supports it, so does the LA County Democratic Association. So do the California teachers. They also support it, so it's not a bad thing, and it's not bad for our community. And I am really, I also believe, yeah, there should be a public process and community engagement, and those maps could be improved upon. I think that there would be far more people, like choosing to run for school board if they were neighborhood, and as opposed to at-large elections, we'd see even more.
Thank you, Esther. Appreciate it. Uh, all right, everyone, we are at the finish line, and everyone has a chance for a one-minute closing statement. My bot is telling me that Miles, you will begin.
Okay, well, I guess I go first twice. This is a really complicated stuff, and we're throwing around quick things and trying to use tag words, you know, that have really deep, important meanings. So this is what I'll say. In 2016, we had the Noguera Report, which talked about achievement gaps. And if you look at that report, it talks about how the teachers don't buy into the school. They don't buy into the school board, and they are just going along, doing what they're doing. It talks about how the school board's not engaged in the schools, that they don't go to the schools. It talks about how the principals don't spend enough time in the classrooms. That was almost six years ago, and it hasn't changed. And that's the, that's the reality of this school board. It hasn't changed. And I don't want to bad-mouth anybody. I don't dislike anybody here. I really don't. I know you guys all are doing the best you can. But I think it's time for a change. I think it's time for something.
Thank you, Miles.
That's it.
Very much. I'm going to Esther next.
Um, so it's time to change the way the district does business, and it's time to collaborate fully and fully realize the potential of our schools. And we have such an amazing, diverse community, and I want, I want all of the parents who think of that their children are better served in private schools to come back. And we can do this, and we can have greater schools, and we can attract the best teachers, and we can pay for them. And we just have to reimagine budgets and work together and stop the conflicts and the waste and the distractions, and just focus on our kids and education. And I also want to say, I'm just so proud to be a part of Santa Monica and Malibu, and just, I love these schools, and that's why I want to invest more, and I'm in it for the long haul. I'm thrilled that my child.
Thank you, Esther. Thank you very much. I'm gonna go to Lori next.
This is not an easy time for progressive school board members to run for reelection. Last year, a small but loud group of parents tried recalling several of us on the board. I was one of them. They lied about things that the district was doing. They lied about us as individuals. And I see that the same thing is continuing to go on out there in the world. Misinformation is being spread. And so I want to make an appeal to you as Democrats. I want to say that Democrats are better than this. We have to stand together and say, we can talk civilly about policy differences, but we have to say no to misinformation campaigns that are more in keeping with Trumpian politics and right-wing politics than Democratic politics. I hope you will join Congressmember Ted Lieu, Supervisor Sheila Kuehl, State Senator Ben Allen, State Assemblyperson Richard Bloom, and many others who have supported my reelection campaign as you.
Thank you, Lori.
Thank you.
Next up is Stacy.
Um, thank you so much for everyone listening and this conversation. It's so inadequate. We need so much more time, but I hope you will all take a look. This is important for us all to engage. I really hope that I will be endorsed, but whether I am or not, just know that I am in this to represent Malibu, but also all of our kids. I really want to bring my past training in higher education, early childhood education, and in conflict engagement to the board and to continue the service I'm already doing, just in a new way, and I really look forward to that. And I'm happy for people to reach out to me and talk more. I love hearing the stories you're sharing of what you've done and your ideas, and I think that's really important. And we need to keep doing that together as a community. So I'll put my email in the chat, and I really do invite conversations. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Stacy.
Thank you. I am a parent of a SMMUSD student and believe that all children should receive an excellent public education. I am a committed parent volunteer with a proven track record, a strong advocate for our students, especially our at-risk and vulnerable students. If elected to the school board, I will advocate for more resources devoted to addressing learning loss, mental health, and closing the achievement gap. I will also advocate for continued to promote our diversity, equity, and inclusion in our schools, encourage increased parent engagement and communication, look for ways to decrease class sizes and retain our fabulous teachers, and promote safe, secure, sustainable schools. I will draw on my unique background and extensive experience to be an effective school board member and to continue to advocate for all students. As a lifelong Democrat, I would be honored to receive the endorsement of the Santa Monica Dem Club. This is my club, so it would be an honor for me to receive your endorsement. Thank you so much. Have a great night.
Thank you, Alicia. And last, we have Richard.
Thank you, friends. I am a lifelong educator. I'm a professor at Santa Monica College, teaching American government and politics with a focus on difference politics, race, and queer theory. I have lived a life dedicated. I am a Democrat. I'm a proud Democrat, and I am deeply committed to public education because what public education has done for me and for my family. I believe that my collaborative nature, my engaging with members of our community, with sitting down and hearing those who have grievances and concerns, and those who have desires for us to improve in certain areas more than we have, I am here to support them and our community, but most importantly, the children in our district. I am very proud to be running with Lori Lieberman and Alicia Menando. I think the three of us are humbly and respectfully asking for this club's endorsement, and I super-duper appreciate all of your time this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard. And I want to thank all of you for your time and your perseverance during this debate and your willingness to step up. Much. So thank you very much for your time. And I'll throw it back to John.
Thank you so much, Melissa. That was a great debate. I really appreciate hearing from all the, all six candidates and all the candidates we heard from this evening. Before we go, just a quick reminder that next week, this same time, 6:30 meeting, we'll be hearing from the city council candidates. We'll be hearing about the local ballot measures going on. And everybody, please have a great night, and we'll see you next week.